I am going to call this meeting, um, this Planning Commission meeting on October 10th to order. Just love doing that. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Okay. Good evening. Um, if anyone would like to speak tonight, we need to swear you in. So even if you think you would like to speak, go ahead and get sworn in. It saves us time. So, um, the other part to that is please be to the point. If you agree with someone else who's before you, just acknowledge that you agree with what they say. That'll also save some time. So if anyone who would like to speak tonight will please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you. Okay. Will you do roll call, please? Here.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Here.
Commissioner Preston.
Preston here.
Commissioner El Wiley.
Here.
Chairman McLean.
Yes. All right. First up is the consent agenda.
Heather is here.
Oh, Heather's here. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's right. Heather.
Yes.
Okay. First thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. Has any, everybody had a chance to go over with the minutes?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Here.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner El Wiley.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
I should've said yes.
Now we're clear.
Testing.
So the consent agenda has been approved. Um, next is the case to be continued, case number 23-400-15. No, no, no. Where am I?
Well, you're right, but it's a continued case.
Yes. This is a continued case. So, this case, case number 23-400-15, short-term rental at 12111 East 51st Terrace South. Staff, will you give us report?
Way in there.
Wait.
23-123, isn't it?
Which, which agenda are you looking at? You need the new agenda.
They changed the agenda.
Yeah, the, the first, the Babcock case needs to be continued.
Yeah, I got this one.
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that would continue case 23-400-15 to October...
24th.
24th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Here.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner El Wiley.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
I should've said yes.
Now we're clear.
Testing.
So the consent agenda has been approved. Um, next is the case to be continued, case number 23-400-15. No, no, no. Where am I?
Well, you're, you're right, but it's a continued case.
Yes. This is a continued case. So, this case, case number 23-400-15, short-term rental at 12111 East 51st Terrace South. Staff, will you give us report, please?
Okay. This is case 23-123, applicant John Carnes, um, action to rezone from C2 General Commercial to I1 Industrial. As you can see on the vicinity map, um, it's where, you can see these two red, uh, streets there. The one on top is, uh, Truman Road, and then the thicker one is 291. And this is just, and this is just south of, um, Truman Road on, on 291. As you can see here, um, this is the zoning map. You've got, um, that existing, uh, single-family subdivision across the highway to the northeast. You've got, uh, basically undeveloped property, uh, to the north. Uh, you've got, um, um, what has been a, up toward 291, a, uh, tow lot off and on for the past couple decades. And then, uh, undeveloped, uh, undermined, uh, property there to the south. You've, uh, to the west, you've got industrial and single-family zone property, that industrial property, so legal non-conforming salvage and tow yard there. And then, um, uh, you've got the entrance to geospace there to the southeast, that property being, um, assortment of zonings, uh, but those surface zonings aren't as important as what the, you know, the underground zoning that's required for that use there. The comprehensive plan, um, is designate this entire area as residential and sees this, um, uh, staying, um, in that way. And, um, here is the property. It's heavily wooded right now. Um, you've got existing, uh, driveway there at the southeast. That one to the northeast is actually for the property that's to the north. And then, of course, you can see those tractor trailer, trailers there parked in that, uh, fenced tow lot that's closer to the, uh, Independence Avenue traffic light on 291. Um, project description, a request by John Carnes to rezone the property at, uh, 420 South Highway M291 from C2 General Commercial to I1 Industrial. The 4.55 acre wooded tract located at, uh, uh, 420 South M291 is not developed. It has a 320, 20 feet of frontage along M291 until most recent, until the most recent comprehensive plan. Uh, this corridor had been envisioned for commercial development and is still associated with commercial and industrial zoning. The applicant's property has been commercially and industrially zoned since, uh, 1965. Uh, physical characteristics of the property, uh, the heavily wooded tract that butts M291, uh, there is an existing curb cut and entrance off the highway like I showed you. Uh, the presence of a jersey barrier, um, allows for only ride-in and ride-out. Um, the topography is a little rough, but the area is generally flat. Um, particularly a little steep and rough, uh, by the, the right-of-way of the, of the state highway. Sanitary sewers are not available, and the water, water is a few hundred feet distant. Uh, the property is currently not platted. The area north of the tract is largely an open field and undeveloped. Uh, the property to the south is undeveloped and densely wooded. The property directly to the west of the tract is legal non-conforming salvage yard, and to the east lies M291. And again, further northeast is that single-family neighborhood. The proposal, well, the applicant, uh, seeks to rezone the property from C2 to I1 in order to align the zoning with that of the properties to the north. The property has been, um, undeveloped and vacant for many years and is not suitable for residential use given its location, um, along M2, the M291 corridor and the use of a budding and nearby properties. Uh, the prospective buyer intends to establish a CDL trucking course on this property. The comprehensive plan, however, as we had seen, envisions residential established neighborhoods. Uh, analysis, as far as consistency with Independence for All's strategic plan, uh, rezoning this property would be consistent with the Independence All strategic plan. One of the objectives of the strategic plan includes to support, uh, development of industrial and office parks. Often this property, um, often rezoning this property to industrial may move the city of Independence closer to achieving this objective. Uh, comprehensive plan, uh, guiding land use principles, uh, for the current designation. Um, the guiding principles outlined in the comprehensive plan is to foster development opportunities within the city and to revitalize, um, unused or underused properties. Um, policies derived from this principle encourage development or adaptive reuse of vacant or underutilized buildings and/or sites. Um, rezoning this property to I1 and allowing industrial use may foster, uh, use of this vacant, underutilized property with limited access to utilities. Analysis, um, uh, under zoning, section 14, 70202C of the Unified Development Ordinance defines I1 districts as being intended to accommodate low and moderate impact industrial uses and activities. As far as historic or archaeological sites, uh, there are, are no apparent, um, uh, archaeological and historical sites located on this property. Um, public utilities, utilities are available along the north property line, and water is available a few hundred feet to the north away as well, but there's, there's no sewer in the vicinity of this, uh, property. Um, I think my understanding is this, there's a lot of undermining, and that was part of the reasons they had trouble putting sewer down in this area. Um, final plan review and municipal services permit, um, before constructing payment for an envisioned, uh, commercial truck driving course, uh, final plan review must be submitted to planning and zoning, and then permits, engineering plans, and calculations must be provided to development services. Planned access to Highway M291 will have to, uh, be cleared by, um, the Missouri Department of Transportation as well as the city's engineering staff. To the tract would be from an existing drive that is only ride-in and ride-out given the barrier. Um, MODOT and municipal services, um, might require a study and modification of the entrance. Paved surface, uh, the proposed driving course, according to applicant, will, uh, simply be a paved surface with paint and cones. The remainder of the property will remain green space, including a detention basin for stormwater runoff. Vehicle storage, given the tract of the, of the proposed driving course is adjacent to an R6 zone district and near another, that rather than being at least 500 feet away, vehicles cannot be stored on this lot. Any proposed equipment shed should be on a final, uh, plan review and meet, uh, non-residential design requirements along with any required building permits. Fence to enclose the property, so without a principal structure to define the exterior and interior yard, uh, fencing to enclose the property cannot be provided. Uh, landscaping, buffer and screen, uh, street trees and parking lot perimeter plantings will have to be provided per code. A 15-foot wide residential buffer with opaque fence and the required plantings per code must be provided as a screen abutting the R6 zoning along the southern edge of the property. Uh, stormwater, when the final plan review is submitted to planning and zoning and the permit is applied for with development services, uh, stormwater detention calculations for the proposed impervious driving surface will be necessary. Uh, this property is not located in a stream buffer zone, nor is it in a federally designated floodplain area. Uh, CIP investments, uh, there are no, uh, MODOT or city CIP investments planned, uh, for this area at this time. So, this is sort of standing a little bit in the mode right of way, looking into the property to the southwest. Really can't really see into it very well because it's just a wall of trees in front of you when you're right there, as you can see here, looking to the north along the, the same, um, area. And then, um, here's looking south toward the Independence Avenue light there at, um, the Geotech entrance, or geospace entrance, I mean. And then this is looking northeast across the highway at the subdivision. And then this is directly across the highway at the property to the east, across the barrier. And this is spinning around and looking directly into the property. Recommendation, uh, staff recommends approval of this, uh, rezoning for the following reasons. Number one, uh, the driving lot shall be paved in accordance with, uh, city code requirements. And number two, uh, stormwater detention shall be provided in the city's adopted design and construction manual. Um, and three, a, uh, final plan review must be submitted along with, uh, construction permits, uh, engineering plans, and stormwater calculations, which shall be provided, uh, to community development. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Harker has brilliantly argued both sides of this case, to the point that I don't know why or how he got to with the recommendation. He said allowing an industrial use may limit the attractiveness of the surrounding and nearby property to businesses and developers seeking to develop the area in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And then he argues allowing this proposed zoning should not be detrimental to nearby properties. In my confusion, I hope you will clarify and help me to understand why and how you got to the point of recommending the approval.
I think a, a lot of the issue with this property is the inability to develop it for, um, the, the zone use.
I withdraw the question. I withdraw the question. I'm gonna wait for counsel to argue probably more succinctly in favor of approval, and then we'll revisit. I yield back, Madam Chair.
Any other questions, staff?
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Hey, Brian. Now, I'm looking at the map here. I see two entrances. Are both of them on the property?
No, that one to the north is on the property of the north.
And one to the north is already industrial, correct?
It's comm, I'm trying to remember. It's both.
It's both?
Mm-hmm. It's both.
So the one to the north is...
So it's, it has two zonings on one lot.
Oh, one lot's got two zonings, so it's split in the middle or split down the side? Bring it back, back, back up, let's see. Okay, so the front side's industrial, back...
Yeah, back where that quonset hood is, it's, uh, it's industrial.
So that's all one lot, the purple and the red's what I'm seeing?
Yeah, if, with, anytime we do a new permit or anything, you know, we, we require, you know, these things to be harmonized.
Right.
You know, our code doesn't allow two zonings on one lot, but this pre-exists.
Because we got, um, we got, you said there's a tow lot behind it that's not conforming, is that correct?
Well, it's a, sort of a salvage yard facility, which we don't allow salvage yards in the city anymore.
Okay.
And it's, it's, it's been there for a long time.
Okay, yeah, okay. I was just curious on that aspect. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Brian, I have a couple of questions of clarification as well. Um, on fencing to enclose the property, the sentence says, "Without a principal structure to define the exterior and interior yards, fencing to enclose the property cannot be provided." So am I to take that to mean there could be no fence?
Fence for the purpose of enclosure. The code, another portion of the code says they're gonna have to provide at least a fence on the south side because it's required for the buffer.
That was my clarification, because in the next sentence it says a 15-foot wide residential buffer must be done with an opaque fence.
Because that's a code requirement.
Okay. So, two different, so it's kinda going back to what my fellow Planning Commission person, it seems that there's a lot of, I'll use the word problems, with this particular plat that has not been platted, um, where we wanna have a business, but there's no sewer connection. We wanna have something developed there because it hasn't been developed ever, and, but we don't think it's gonna enhance the strategic plan in any way for the city, and may or may not be good for the residents. So, I'm more, yes, I just see so many yes and no's.
It's, it's, it's a troublesome property along there because of our inability to provide utilities and things in that area, and, you know, that, that, like I said, that whole, that area's been undermined. There was supposed to be, actually, Independence Avenue down to the south was actually supposed to, at one time, it'd be, um, expanded to the west, and it physically can't be done because of, um, the mining problems that's underneath that property.
Probably a better question for, the person's gonna speak for it, what, what are the options without any kind of sewer? I mean, what kind of potential problems, code violations, inability to provide that from a owner, from the city perspective? Is there any concerns that sewer cannot be provided?
I'm not, I'm not understanding how that relates to, uh, violation.
Somebody owning a business, having a business, is there any kind of potential problem that there's no way to connect with sewer?
I mean, it's gonna limit the ability to be able to put any kind of structure on there that has any kind of activity in it, obviously.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I wanna revisit just one more time. In the analysis portions, consistency with Independence for All strategic plan, the very first sentence says rezoning this property would not be consistent with the Independence for All strategic plan. And yet, I hear staff making a recommendation for approval. I look forward to the learned counsel making a more succinct statement, and I yield back.
Yeah, I, I think that it would be better to bring the applicant up here, and then we can reserve some of our questions for later. I think that it is problematic, I have the same question, for the strategic plan, I think that's throwing all of us off, is that its strategic plan is residential in an area that really clearly is very difficult to even do for residential. It's cost prohibitive, it's pretty much impossible, yeah. And so I think that's throwing us off, and so I think that's where we just have to decide whether, you know, we rezone it and ignore that part, because the reality is, it's really not available for residential. It, it's just cost prohibitive. So anyway, unless you're doing floating houses, and I don't even know what that would look like. So, let's bring the applicant up, and tell us what you know, and introduce yourself, please, with your address.
John Carnes, attorney, 222 West Maple, Independence, Missouri. I believe that the commissioners have this hard copy of the site. And, um, everybody hearing me okay? And, uh, the applicant, the, actually, I'm representing two people. The property owner are Mr. and Mrs. Pipes. They have a contract with an Aaron Day to purchase the property, Aaron Day being the person to purchase the property. I have with here tonight Bob Jackal, who's the real estate agent, who will, who represents the Pipes. And that contract has a contingency in it that if the zone should be approved, that my client, being Aaron Day, could use this property for the intended use. And I will go over what that intended use is. He purchased a property some time ago at Hub Drive in Gudgeo, Ungudgeo. That was a tailor shop. He put substantial money in that to create a CDL classroom setting for people who wanna get a truck driver's license. He went to the city, complied with everything, did an excellent job at rehabbing that. Then he stated, "I need a place to take my students where they can demonstrate their ability to drive a 18-wheeler cab." Like, when we go take our license, you know, you take out and you show the instructor what you can do. So he came and said he'd like to do it on this property. And, um, so I looked at the property, and he made his case for the property. And what would happen on this particular property if this should be approved, he would pave the part that you see on your map that's shaded. He would probably two to maybe three times a week, go to that site with the, not the whole 18-wheeler trailer, but just the cab, lay out some cones, drive around, grade the students, and then leave. He wouldn't leave any vehicle there, any trailer there, he would bring the cones with them. And that's really very simple, what's gonna happen to the property. He's not gonna, he's not gonna develop the whole piece. He does have water retention. The utilities there are not feasible. The water, I think, is to the east, the sewers, uh, the whole situation is not financially feasible to bring that there. If so required by the code, he'd bring a... He purchased a property some time ago at Hub Drive in Gudell, Ungudel. That was a tailor shop. He put substantial money in that to create a CDL classroom setting for people who wanna get a truck driver's license. He went to the city, complied with everything, did an excellent job at rehabbing that. Then he stated, "I need a place to take my students where they can demonstrate their ability to drive a 18-wheeler cab." Like, when we go take our license, you know, you take out and you show the instructor what you can do. So, he came and said he'd like to do it on this property. And, so, I looked at the property, and he made his case for the property. And what would happen on this particular property if this should be approved? He would pave the part that you see on your map that's shaded. He would probably two to maybe three times a week, go to that site with the, not the whole 18-wheeler trailer, but just the cab, lay out some cones, drive around, grade the students, and then leave. He wouldn't leave any vehicle there, any trailer there. He would bring the cones with him. And that's really very simple, what's gonna happen to the property. He's not gonna, he's not gonna develop the whole piece. He does have water retention. The utilities there are not feasible. The water, I think, is to the east, the sewers. The whole situation is not financially feasible to bring that there. If so required by the code, he'd bring a Johnny-on-the-spot or a comparable thing with him. If you have to have a restroom facility for that short time of period of driving around there. And so, to me, it's, uh, looking at the property, and we've talked about the comprehensive plan for the city. I'm sure when you have to put that plan together and entail the whole city, you may not look at the details of development like topography, utilities, or things of that nature, where I don't know when that plan was even last developed. So, I think that this property here, and he's gonna be, have to considerable, um, moving or doing other things to the property. It's not a ready-made piece at all. And so, that's what his intention are to use it. That's what he directed me to come here before the, the city, the commission, to ask for this zoning change. When I explained the use of the property to the staff, they said this is the zoning that would be required to partake in that activity. So, I don't know, commissioners. I just know that there might be a lot of regulations, and there might be a comprehensive plan, but there's also a thing called common sense. And it seems to me, if you look at this property, it's never gonna be residential. In fact, I would discourage my client from even buying it. To me, it's worthless. But it's undermined, and the fact that he wants to put his capital into this piece for, for to help his school, well, I applaud him, and I'm here representing him. And, so, I think the staff's recommendation, I think, what they're maybe trying to say is maybe that comprehensive plan is not necessarily precisely accurate in changing times and in practicality in some situations.
Any questions? Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
The learned counsel cited that this property may be potentially worthless.
That's my comment, Your Honor, Commissioner. I think it's worthless.
I, I would like to see the Board of Equalization's valuation of it. I don't think they would determine that it was worthless, sir.
Well, it sounds like to me the same people did this assessment, might have been some people that did the comprehensive plan. I think it has some assessment to it, but I don't think that's a precise appraisal. I'm giving my opinion, and that's my opinion.
That it's worthless.
Well, in your opinion, it is. But a man that's lived here-
I have no opinion, Counselor.
Have you looked at this property?
Yes, sir.
Do you think it's worth anything?
It has value. I suppose if we were to look at the valuation by the Board of Equalization, it would be some number other than zero, sir.
Okay, so, I'm gonna just curtail this for half a second, maybe longer. I think we're gonna, we're getting out of our, let's just work on-
Well, I, I cannot permit a statement that is factually not correct, Madam Chair. I will not accept that. It is not appropriate, and counsel knows that.
Well, Commissioner, I appreciate your opinion. I weigh it as such. And I will simply say, it may not worthless, but certainly it has challenges.
Absolutely. I concur fully, Counselor.
Then we do come to agreement.
Yes, sir. I'm sure we do.
Yeah.
Thank God.
Now, there are unintended consequences when we zone something industrial. My question then is, with counsel standing, what method do we have to get the accommodation of this business that is a good business? I've watched that business on Gudel prosper. I was delighted to see that maybe that, I thought maybe their trucks would disappear, Counselor, from the Gudel and McDonald's parking lot, and that we would figure out a way to park those trucks on this worthless piece of ground. But I, I think we, what we're looking at here is how do we get this business in that location without compromising the zoning integrity for other businesses? And I know we have done some brilliant things in the past where the zoning is done, completed, and the business is accommodated without the unintended consequences of what the industrial one zoning would allow. So, how do we take care of this good business without an industrial one zoning? I am difficult, I'm challenged to see this become zoning, uh, industrial one. I think we can do this, but I, I, I cannot go with a, a industrial zoning because of what it's gonna do, and what it will invite, and what it will permit. And if my concerns are unfounded, I, I hope someone will enlighten me.
Well, Mr. Preston, I'm down, I'm a little lost here. Isn't it RA Commercial, correct?
It's C2.
Okay, it's C2, Commercial. I mean, we got semis that run around all these other commercial places. What's the difference him taking a semi and running around over there on a piece of black asphalt?
With a few cones.
Yeah, with a few cones. I mean, I don't see why it needs to end up-
Articulate that again, Commissioner.
What?
What you just said. Start over.
Okay, basically, it's Commercial 2. We already have commercial properties that have semis. Walmart, all them, bring all these semis in and run them around on their parking lots. What's wrong with having a parking lot that has the proper drainage on a C2 to run around on?
Well, their, well, their primary use, I would say, would not be the running around the parking lot.
Primary use is parking.
And their primary use in Walmart is the Walmart building.
Well, but, I mean, they're still taking a semi, backing it in, parking it there, unloading, then driving away. That's why I don't understand why we need to change it from C2 to I1. Then you're opening up a deaf and came worms, because in the future, somebody else can go in and do something. And my opinion is that if they wanted to have sewer, they could probably put a, um-
Septic.
Septic in. So, if they wanted to. Does that mean, that's primary? You don't have to go down as far for sewer as you do a septic tank and just drain it out. So, you opened up a can worm by putting that I1 there. I think it needs to stay C2, but if we need to get them a special permit to drive a semi on it, let's do that instead, instead of changing it.
May I interject?
Thank you, Commissioner Nesbit.
Uh, as I was sitting here and listening to your point, and I don't wanna get too far off, but I think this issue with Gihaw Building out on 24 Highway, there was an issue there that a school was gonna go in there and have a truck school, if my memory serves me correct. And later, that did not happen, and it's, the storage unit said it is now. I can't recall what the city zoning requirement was there on that property. I'm sure it wasn't an industrial change, but I'm not certain. I, I'm only here because the staff told me it had to be zoned industrial for this use.
That's what, that's what, we need to figure out what's wrong.
Counselor, you're a learned scholar.
Uh, you said I was an esteemed attorney, and I appreciate that also.
Absolutely, and I will say that again repeatedly. Why don't we figure this out? Because I know the Planning Commission staff is capable of doing exactly what Commissioner Nesbit said. We should be able to carve out a method without the unintended consequences of the rezoning. And I think your mission is to get that business there. And how we do it, well, that's on the backs of the, of staff. I yield back, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So, why don't we do this? Gives you a little more time. We'll go ahead and proceed to see if there's anybody here who would like to speak for or against, and then we'll come back.
Okay.
Is that good?
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Okay, now, let's decide what the answer is.
Rick, have you come up with anything?
What say you, staff?
So, I mean, the case that you have before you is a rezoning case. So, you have to consider it as that. Staff has made its recommendation. Obviously, this commission can discuss that, whether you agree with that or not. But at the end of the day, you have to look at it for what the applicant has provided. Now, if he were to come back and, you know, we could look at other potential options with this, but realize too that, again, one of the reasons that the recommendation was made to, at least from staff's point of view, to allow it to go ahead and be industrial is because of the limitations of the actual utilities on this property. Again, you can agree with that, or you can disagree with that, but at the end of the day, that's the application you have before you. Anything else would have to come back separately as some other type of, you know, PUD or something that has some other type of use in it, but that's not what you have before you today.
Okay, so, can you give us the bullet point, Cliff notes, on the difference between C2 and industrial one as it pertains to this case?
Yeah, so, basically, what they want to do with this site right now is an industrial use, which is why the application is for an industrial rezoning. If they wanted to do, again, we, we've kinda done this before, where some people may wanna do like a heavier automotive use, and we've done some kind of a C2 PUD or something like that. We typically don't see that with industrial sites, but, or industrial uses, I should say. But however, you know, that would be kinda the only method. We would certainly have to look into that, see how that fits with this area, but understand that would have to, you know, you talk about the staff, it actually would have to come from the applicant if they choose to do that, or to bring that plan forward.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If you would invite the learned counsel back to the-
I approach.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Counselor, I don't see how this commission is gonna get, and I'm speaking universally, but more succinctly on myself. I want this business there, but I don't see how we're gonna do it through an industrial. I think the director, the Deputy Director of the Planning Commission staff has opened the door that you guys can work it out through some, Commissioner Nesbit, how did you articulate that?
What do you mean? C2?
A C2 with a, a PUD, a CUD, or FUD?
No. What, here, let's, let's continue on. I'm gonna make a motion, but let's continue on now.
But I think we can get what the applicant wants done, and what I think this commission is leaning toward.
Well, what I'm seeing here is that I think staff, or I mean, I don't know if something ball got dropped or what, but they came in asking if they could do this, and their first thing it says, "Take it to I1." Where I think they need to go back to staff, and staff say, "What else can we do instead of I1, since it's not valuable according to the city's opinion, is that we need to go back to, uh, look at maybe a special use permit or something like that? I don't know if it can be done that a way, but commercial, the way I see it, it's commercial already. Put a parking lot on it and drive on it. That's why I see it, because it's already a commercial. I wouldn't think you'd have to rezone it. I mean, I don't know if there's anything, all they gotta do is make sure the drainage is correct, according to all the rules they got here.
Commissioner Nesbit, we have a learned counsel to the right of the esteemed counsel, who's been paid probably into the thousands of dollars per hour. Let's let him articulate a, a method out of this mess.
At, at this point, I would request a five-minute recess to confer with planning staff before I was to make a recommendation, if the chair would entertain such a request.
I think that would be a great idea. So, thank you. You can sit down, and we will take a five-minute recess.
We return at 6:50, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I'm calling this session back to order after longer recess than we said.
Yes, thank you, we apologize.
No, it's fine.
Madam Chair, the applicant has a request.
Thank you.
Yes, I would like for the commission to consider moving this to their next meeting, and maybe between that time period, we get more clarification from the staff on what other options may be available to accomplish the goal of my client.
So moved. Am I picking that?
No.
I yield back, Madam Chair, I'm out of order. I'm so excited I got silly.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Are we to our discussion?
I am going to close the public hearing, and then we can go ahead and discuss, and then in or...
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that we postpone case 23-100-23 to the next October meeting.
Can we move that to the October 24th? Okay. We're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
No.
And Chairman McLean.
No. The case number 23-100-23 is continued to October 24th. All right. Thank you very much. Case number 23-100-24, rezoning of 2500 North Liberty Street. We're ready for a report.
All right, this is case 23-100-24, the shop building rezoning. The applicant is Lindsey Vogt, and the action is to rezone from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to C2 General Commercial. And as you can see on the map here, that it's at the corner of North Liberty and Colonel So, just to clear up any confusion, I'm going to get this out of the way at the beginning. So, the original property was platted in the 50s, I believe, and the property line is what's shown in yellow on this, on the presentation, but the current property line is what's marked in red. So it's roughly rectangular in shape now, and I'll discuss why that is a little bit further on. So, this is the surrounding zoning. You can see that it is mostly R6 single-family. There is that lot that is R30 PUD, but that is currently a vacant lot with nothing, no development on it, it's just green space. The lot to the south, across Colonel, is, is Zone C1, but it's, it's got utilities on it, it's not a commercial, commercial property, and then to the south of that is a property that is Zone C2, but primarily the overwhelming zoning around the area is R6 single-family. This map shows the comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan intends for this to be established residential neighborhoods. So this is an aerial photograph of the property. You can, so right to the north of this is a church, and you can see that the property line, or that the parking lot to the church is kind of right along that property line. So that the, for many years, the church actually had encroached onto the, the property with their parking lot, and just last year, the church gained that sort of triangle bit through adverse possession. So this is the current boundary that we're dealing with. So to give some background, for many years, a plumbing business operated at this location. However, the business has since closed, and the current owner is seeking to sell the property. Staff was contacted by the listing, real estate agent, with inquiries regarding allowed uses in C1 zones. As explained to staff, the agent found a buyer that intends to operate a pest control and extermination business on the site. However, this is not an allowed use in C1 districts. This type of business is considered to be building maintenance services and is explicitly mentioned in Article 2 of the UDO. Building maintenance services are only allowed in C2 General Commercial and C3 Service Commercial Zones. The applicant, who has worked closely with the listing agent, is requesting the property be rezoned to C2 to accommodate this buyer. So property history. The property was platted as Lot 1 of the Kentucky Hills Platte in 1957. It is the only lot of this platte to have frontage on Liberty Street. Its irregular shape and larger size suggests that it was not intended to be used as residential property, like the rest of the platted lots. When the city, sorry, when the city introduced zoning in 1965, the property was designated C1 Neighborhood Commercial. Through the changes to the city's zoning ordinances in 1980 and 2009, the property has retained its original designation and been zoned C1 for 80, for 58 years. The date of the existing building is difficult to determine, however, aerial imagery from 1969 clearly shows the existing building, the large paved area surrounding the building, and the open space that lies on the northern half of the property. Comparing this imagery to aerial photographs taken earlier this year, the property seems to have changed relatively little in more than a half-century. The property has surely had varying uses over the years. Most recently, a plumbing business has been operating on the property. The property is currently vacant and awaiting sale. To the north of the subject property lies a church. Prior to 2022, the church property and the subject property shared a property line that ran diagonally to the northwest from the street right of way. For many years, the church parking lot had encroached onto the subject property. In October of 2022, the church gained ownership of the northern triangle portion of the subject property through the use of adverse possession. Now the subject property is roughly rectangular in shape. The physical characteristics of the property. The northern half of the property is open space that has never been developed and has the appearance of a vacant lot. The entirety of the remaining southern half is paved and impervious surface. A building sits in the middle of the paved portion of the lot, roughly equidistant from Liberty and Colonel Drive. The primary part of the building is square with a flat roof and currently painted gray. The door to the building faces Liberty Street. Attached to the northwest part of the primary building is a taller section with two garage doors. One faces Liberty while the other faces Colonel. The property bought several single-family residential properties on its west side. Each of these yards is fenced in by a chain link fence. The subject property itself does not have any fencing to, to screen the commercial activity and use on the property. The characteristics of the area. Directly to the east of the property, across Liberty Street, lies two large lots with single-family residences on them. South of these two lots is a large wooded area that has remained undeveloped. Beyond the church, beyond the church that lies to the north are mostly single-family homes. To the northeast of the property, on the east side of Liberty Street, is Mill Creek Elementary, which is in the Independent School District. The areas to the west of the property are dominated by single-family residences. Directly to the south, across Colonel Drive, sits a utility structure owned by the city. The property on which the utility structure sits is also Zone C1. Further to the south lies another commercial property that is Zone C2, but is currently not occupied and sits vacant. The other properties to the south along Liberty Street are single-family homes. The proposal. The applicant, on behalf of the owner, seeks to have this property rezoned and its use expanded so that it can be sold to a specific buyer seeking to operate a pest control and extermination business on the property, and that is to rezone from C1 to C2. So time for the analysis. Regarding the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan envisions the future land use of this property and the surrounding area to be residential neighborhoods. The plan provides for commercial uses in neighborhood environments by stating, "Neighborhoods serving commercial developments, parks, and civic uses are also common in neighborhoods. The character of existing neighborhoods should be protected when new development is proposed in order to serve the quality of life for existing residents." Although in terms of construction, this is not a new development, the spirit of the statement in the comprehensive plan applies to this situation. The comprehensive plan puts focus on small-scale retail integrated into self-sufficient neighborhoods. A heavier commercial use intended for a community-wide and regional service area is not compatible with this type of commercial use suggested, is not compatible with this type of commercial use. The existing zoning designation of C1 is more in line with the vision of the comprehensive Regarding zoning, Section 14301-02D of the Unified Development Ordinance defines C2 districts as being primarily intended to accommodate community and region-serving retail, sales, and service uses. Allowing heavier commercial use at this location may have a negative effect on nearby residences and, on residents, and alter the character of the surrounding residentially zoned area. There are no apparent historical or archaeological issues with the property. All utilities are present in the adjacent rights of way, and are currently no CIP investments in the area. Now, to look at the pictures, this is looking westward directly at the property. That's the, the front door that I mentioned. This is looking across Liberty Street. This is looking north across Colonel Drive. And you can see the, to the left of the image, the residential houses with chain link fences along their backyards. This is looking north up Liberty Street. You can see the church there on the US side of the street. This is looking the opposite way, looking south down Liberty Street. There's the utility structure and that other building that is Zone C2. This is looking away from the property eastward across Liberty Street. These are the two very large lots with single-family homes on them. And this is looking west down Colonel Drive into the Kentucky Hills area. And this is actually on the property facing northward, looking towards that church. And staff does not recommend approval of this rezon, of this rezoning for the following reasons. One, due to, due to the predominant R6 zoning along this corridor and the surrounding area, C2 zoning would be out of character for this location. Number two, the property bought several single-family residences. C2 zones are primarily intended to accommodate community and regional retail sales and services. Generally, C2 zones are not compatible with neighborhood environments. Number three, the comprehensive plan envisions this area to be used for residential neighborhoods. Building, maintenance services, and other uses allowed in C2 districts are not compatible with the vision of future land use in the comprehensive plan. And that completes my presentation.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Okay, if I understand you correctly, they want to put in a pest control system or business. The business there before, which had a permit correct, was a plumbing business, right?
Correct.
Okay, so a plumbing business does maintenance on houses. Pest control does maintenance on houses. I mean, we're contradicting ourselves here somehow. I just don't understand how this is happening.
Madam Chair, I know, I like Commissioner Nesbit, and usually he's absolutely factual and on point. However, to compare a plumbing business with a pesticide business is, come on, Commissioner Nesbit, you know better than that.
No, you use pests, they go and for roaches, ants, and all that stuff.
That's right.
Houses.
That's right.
Well, that's a house thing. I mean, that's why I can't understand what, I just don't get it, I guess.
You don't see the difference?
Between a plumbing business and that type of business?
Right.
They're both are working on houses.
Madam Chair, perhaps we should have staff explain to Commissioner Nesbit the profound difference between a plumbing business and a pesticide business.
I have a better idea. How about if we bring the applicant up and we will just go through...
I do have an answer to that, why that is.
That'd be great.
Yeah, so I actually personally am inclined to agree with you, however, the code is pretty explicit that a pest control business is considered building maintenance services, which are not allowed in C1 zonings. Plumbing is also explicitly listed under construction services, which are allowed in C1 zonings.
So that's the difference, construction versus maintenance.
Correct. That's what the, both, both exterminators and plumbers are listed explicitly in the definitions for their respective use category, and so that's why, that's why it's not allowed. I, I would agree that specifically, an extermination business is not all that different, however...
Madam Chair, I take strong exception. Madam Chair, I take strong exceptions to the staff in this point. He's absolutely wrong. There's a profound difference between a plumbing business and a chemical pesticide business, and he should know that. And his personal opinion does not matter because it does not articulate the facts in this case.
I take exception at that. I understand that my personal opinion doesn't matter. I'm explaining what the code says. I wrote these back...
But you offered your personal opinion when this is totally inconsistent with the code. Therefore, your personal opinion is out of order, sir.
Did you read the report, Commissioner?
Excuse me, sir?
Did you read the report, Commissioner?
Yes, sir. I think you did a brilliant presentation.
I recommended against rezoning this based on what the code provides.
But your personal opinion has you in agreement.
I take exception to your mischaracterization of me.
I'd request a five-minute recess to confer with city staff.
Okay.
Again, thank you.
Could we actually make a statement before we go to a break?
No, we're gonna go ahead and take a break, but thank you. This meeting back to order at seven-sixteen. Okay. Are we ready for the applicant to come forward? Or do we?
I am...
We still talking?
No, I think we're, I think we're ready for that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, are you the applicant?
Well, we've got, we're tag teaming here. My name is Tim Bosler. I'm a real estate broker with Hakes Real Estate. I represent the seller.
Okay.
Right here is Jason Smith. He is representative of the company buying the property. And then Lindsey Vogt is the engineering firm hired by Bulwark Pesticide.
Okay. So, as you each speak, I need your name and your address.
Gotcha. I'm gonna start off. Tim Bosler, Hakes Real Estate. My address is thirteen-oh-three Swift, North Kansas City. I wanted to make a couple of comments. First, we don't care what the zoning is, all right? Just to be quite frankly. And Jason's gonna tell you a lot about what they're gonna do. This is not pesticide, they're not brewing chemicals, they're not doing anything. It's literally gonna be a point to pick up product and leave. So, if it's C1, C2, we actually said, let's get a conditional use permit because we just want, it's no different from what is happening now with a plumber than what it would be with these guys. They're just coming in, picking up product, and leaving. No one's there during the day. They come in two, three times a week to pick up product. They have three full-time employees and the branch manager, all of which are background-checked. And somebody was talking about the spirit of the code. That's kind of what we're looking at here. Mitch, who owns the building now, wants to liquidate it. These guys need the property, and they're gonna do a lot of good work on it. And Jason's gonna talk to you about that, but considering that there's a C2 right across the street, and public utilities, which you guys mentioned, well, it's a sewer lift station, so, and a cell phone tower. These guys are prepared to do all the work necessary, build up the fence, paint, improve lighting. Jason will talk about that. But really, it's wanting to be a good neighbor for the neighborhood. We understand complaints, concerns. These guys would be better than what is there now, so. Again, we were here to get a conditional use permit, but staff said no. It's the same process to get a conditional use permit as it is to rezone. We don't care. We just want to have a good tenant in here. Jason, for example, moved from Iowa to be here. His kids go to Mill Creek Elementary School, and he lives in the neighborhood, so if anybody does not like what's going on in the corner, they know how to get old Jason. So, I'll leave that there. I just want to give a little background, and I'll let Jason and Lindsey go.
Thank you.
Who do you want first?
State your name and your address.
My name's Jason Smith, three-nine-oh-eight North Union Street.
Thank you.
We're not selling product to the public. Everything has to be under lock and key per EPA and the Department of Agriculture. This is a place for us to store product under lock and key and to have my service pros come pick up products and then move on with their routes. No trucks are gonna be left as my service pros take their trucks home. When we get the building, we need to paint it, make it a little more presentable. We want to put a fence around it for safety. We also want to put an AC unit in it with ductwork, heater, drywall. Some drywall needs to be done. I know the ceiling needs to be replaced, the tiles. We want to bring value to it and to the neighborhood.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? Okay. Next. Name and your address, please.
Hello. Lindsey Vogt, seventy-fourteen Northwest Kearns Drive, Parkville, Missouri. I would just like to comment on the staff recommendation that the first one, that C2 zoning would be out of character for this location. I just wanted to point out that there is C2 just to the south of this location. Generally, C2 zones are not compatible with neighborhood environments. I think what we were trying to say is that this is not heavy commercial as the zoning suggests. It's typical to what has been operating out of there in the past, such as the plumbing business. And then, the last one, the comprehensive plan envisions this area to be used for residential neighborhoods, and I just don't think that that applies to this corner where there's already a commercial building there next to a lift station, next to a church, next to a school. It just doesn't really jive that that would be used for residential at this location.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? Nope, thank you. Okay. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Come on up. Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Okay.
She raised her hand once.
Has everybody been sworn in? Okay. Do you want me to choose first, or do you just want to kind of decide who's coming up You raised your hand twice, so it's this, that's her. So, if you'll state your name and your address, please.
Yes. My name's Jana Evans, thirty-four-oh-three North Delaware, Independence, Missouri, six-four-oh-five-oh, Kentucky Hills subdivision.
Thank you.
And I just want to say before I start, there was a comment just made with regard to fencing that property, and that is something that was my understanding that it was against city code for that particular lot because I know that the plumber, at one point in time, wanted to fence that property. It came up previously. So, I don't know, that's not my job to know that, but I will tell you that, and maybe somebody looks into that, please.
Thank you.
Madam Chairperson and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I am the president of Kentucky Hills HOA. We are here to represent Kentucky Hills homeowners. There are several of us here this evening in opposition to the rezoning of twenty-five-hundred North Liberty. Comprehensive Plan 2040 works to preserve the integrity of existing neighborhoods. City staff has given their disapproval for this rezoning. The planning commission has an obligation to the homeowners to leave the current zoning in place as it was when they made their investment to buy their homes, in keeping with the original development plan to use of the lot dating back to nineteen-fifty-seven. In early summer, John Perkins, our District One representative, told me Mr. Hakes, the realtor, asked him to fill out the HOA regarding use of this space as offices for Bulwark Exterminator. We felt this sounded innocuous. Weeks later, Hakes phoned me personally and mentioned that there would be a small number of smaller pickup trucks in and out during the day restocking. I was told most employees take their trucks home, so few would be left overnight in the parking lot. Later, we were made aware that the rezoning was going to be required because of the nature of the business is prohibited in C1 zoning necessitating rezoning. We already have significant safety concerns due to the congestion of cars from regular work traffic, school-related both foot and car traffic twice daily four days a week, and neighborhood foot and car traffic. This issue was a major player in the denial of the recent proposal to develop our neighborhood green space, which was denied by both the planning commission and city council. To bring a fleet of trucks of unknown number, size, and frequency into the existing congestion is a recipe for disaster. We feel the motivation for zoning change comes from the realtor purely to market, to either a known client, or to have the opportunity to upsell due to higher commercial designation. This motivation is not with consideration of nor in the best interest of Kentucky Hills homeowners. Rather, it only benefits the realtor, seller, and buyer. Bottom line is, what is exactly going in here, and what will it open us up to in the future if the zoning is changed? C2 designation of the adjacent property was a shock to all of us in Kentucky Hills and was only discovered after reading the letter included in the commission packet. The C2 designation of that property is an absolute enigma, not only to us but to city staff as well. I was told by city staff that C2 designation should have never happened. Kentucky Hills was victim in the recent pass to inappropriate zoning that could have devastated our home values and our right to quiet enjoyment of our homes. We formed an HOA, came together as a community, and opposed that proposal. We are here again, united, standing firmly against this proposal. Kentucky Hills does not like being, does not like being treated like an afterthought. We live here, we pay taxes here, and we vote here. We demand to be considered and put first. I had put handouts for each of you that you should have available. Page two of your handout shows Mill Creek Elementary foot and car traffic demographics with AM and PM photos attached. Page three shows notification letter failures. On the sheet that you have with regard to the school, the timing, I apologize, I had written this out before I actually went down and sat, and my fifth grader went to sixth grade, and they changed the times of the school. So, actually, it's four forty-five PM is that latest time where there's activity down there. Cars began lining up on Liberty Street to drop their children off to school at eight-thirty AM. The line starts at the back entrance of Mill Creek Elementary School and goes all the way south on Liberty Street past twenty-four-hundred North Liberty. Same at PM after-school pickup. In addition, cars are lined up up and down Colonel Drive from Liberty to Pleasant Street and up Osage-McQuay and Pleasant to the north and south on Osage. It has long been the practice of these children and their families to walk through, wait on, and otherwise be physically on the property and parking lot of twenty-five-hundred North Liberty while getting their children to and from school. This has been a huge point of contention with the current property owner. Compounding this situation, there is no crossguard. There was a crossguard. She retired after twenty-five years' service, and the school district has been unable to find a replacement. So, currently, there is not one. A teacher walks down each group of students, gets them across the street, and she walks back. In the past, there was a full-time crossguard at that area during school, being let in and out. The comments that I made about notification letters, I will just say, there were twenty-one properties, seventeen were individuals. Of those seventeen individuals, we made contact with ten homeowners. Eight were against the proposal, four gave signatures, and four were verbal. Seven property owners we failed to contact. Of the five of the ten that we did contact, five did not receive a letter. There are also three properties within one-hundred-and-eighty-five feet that were not on the list. We must question how many of the seven uncontacted property owners also did not get their letter. We appreciate the commission's time and consideration regarding this potentially severely damaging change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Why is she still up, ma'am?
Oh, I'm still there.
I'm on, I'm on, you asked questions, so let's see if we can get an answer real quick from staff. What happened to the notifications? Do you have any idea?
Yes. So, to generate the list of property owners within one-hundred-and-eighty-five feet, I use ArcGIS Pro and use a tool that measures out one-hundred-and-eighty-five feet from the property lines. And then I put that into an Excel document and give it to our administrative assistant to mail those letters. So, according to the county parcel data, those are the properties within one-hundred-and-eighty-five feet. If there are any that are left off, that is a mistake in the county's data.
Okay. Then they said five did not get, get letters, so I mean, we got a problem here because it's happened before. We got a problem with getting proper communication out to the neighbors. I mean, I don't know if we need to try something different or something, but I mean, she has brought the point, and they physically went there and walked to the neighbors, so we have a problem.
Our responsibility is to mail these letters to the property owners, and we put them in the mail.
You don't know if anyone came back, not mailed? You don't know if anyone came back, not mailed?
I'm not, I don't believe so, but I'm not entirely sure.
Okay. So, I'm sorry. Didn't get you an answer, but I tried.
I appreciate you asking.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Next. I assume you're speaking against this case?
Yes.
Thank you. And your name and your address, please.
Hi, Diana Dewitt, three-oh-six West Twenty-Eight Street North. And I'll make this very quick, so I'm not repeating a lot of everything else. I grew up in this neighborhood since the second grade. I moved away about five years in my twenties. When I purchased a house, I bought back in the neighborhood because it was a nice neighborhood and had good school districts. My big concern is, and we heard some differences of what this business is going to be doing, I understand it's pesticide. It is Zone C1, which I don't believe permits pesticide businesses. It is Zone C1, which I don't believe permits pesticide businesses. My big concern is storage and disposal of any pesticides and chemicals. When these property lines back up to four or five houses, I am not one of those, but I'm not all that far away, and I have lots of concerns of chemicals being stored and disposed of there, right behind houses where kids could play in yards, next to a church, across from a school, and that really bothers me. The indication is they will pick up supplies that are stored there. What are those supplies? What does a pesticide company do? To your earlier concern, they spray for bugs. What do you spray for bugs with? Chemicals. I have big concerns about that being in a neighborhood. It's the main entrance to our neighborhood. You can make the building look pretty, but I really don't like people coming to my neighborhood and coming in a main entrance. And what do they see as a pesticide company? No offense, I'm sure you're nice people and you have a good business, but this is an established neighborhood. We want to keep it that way. We don't feel that changing zoning is appropriate for this neighborhood, and as Jana indicated, we were not aware that the other building had been changed. It sat empty for a long time. The prior business at one time was a heating and air conditioning. They only had two or three vans, didn't store any bad things there, and there was a beauty shop there. That's a lot different than storing pesticide chemicals. And just, you know, to finish stating some of the things that the Planning Commission had mentioned initially was, it's just not consistent with a good neighborhood, coming into your entrance to have a place storing pesticides. So that's my two cents worth.
I appreciate the non-repeat. Thank you. Next person. Let's state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Ross Jamison, and I live at 301 West Colonel. You guys actually showed my house in a couple pictures up here. So I live, I can see the property directly from the front of my house, and I would just like to reiterate that this community, the, especially during the morning and afternoon, the streets are flooded with children. They are just running and walking, riding their bikes, riding their scooters, all over the place. And the idea of having a poisonous chemical facility right in our backyard when kids are running around all over the place really, really frightens me, honestly. And me and my wife just purchased our home back in April. We're first-time home buyers, and just the idea that this, again, storage facility for poisonous chemicals would be right in our backyard just scares the heck out of me, honestly. And this is a very active neighborhood. People are always out walking, riding bikes, walking their dogs, running, what have you. And I just, I can tell you for certain, no one in the neighborhood wants this. Nobody. And again, all due respect to the owners of the business. Again, yeah, you guys are, I'm sure, very nice people, but I'm not here for myself, I'm here to protect my neighborhood. Okay, that's what I care about, that's what I'm for, and as long as I'm living in this neighborhood, I'm going to fight tooth and nail to make sure that is not a housing for poisonous chemicals. Okay? That's all I got to say. And I think, yeah, for the past 58 years, I think this council has had it right, and I don't see any reason why we should change this for another 58 years. Okay? So I'll yield back my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello. If you'll state your name and your address.
Ethelun Bray, 500 Colonel Drive, Independence, Missouri, Kentucky Hills subdivision. I want to expand on a couple more points. The size of the building and the lot seemed too small for a business of this nature. The farmer, single proprietor, didn't have a fleet of trucks coming and going. He didn't even operate his business out of that building, he only used it for storage. I wanted to expand on the hazardous chemicals, because if there was a chemical spill or just hosing down the asphalt driveway, et cetera, it can, we directly run into stormwater drains as on the city's pictures of the property. It's predominantly a big storm drain right in front of it. Those went empty into our creeks, specifically Mill Creek, right there. Would you want hazardous chemicals in your backyard? When you bought your house in 1957, you didn't expect a pest control company to open up business to serve the city from your neighborhood. We think that the home values of our residential neighborhood would be adversely affected, certainly those homes adjoining the property. We would like to remain a quiet residential subdivision, raising our families with the school within walking distance. This opens up the possibility of a future renter or owner to expand or replace the building for a larger business with a greater negative impact on our neighborhood. We don't want this rezoning. It's been that way for, you know, the last 50-something years, so the only people that would be benefiting would be three, the three people, the owner, the buyer, and the Realtor. So, and the person that is wanting to open up this business and says his, you know, he's part of the neighborhood and his child goes to Mill Creek and so forth, which is probably true, they probably do go to Mill Creek, but he is not part of the Kentucky Hills subdivision. So he can't speak as a property owner in our subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against this case?
I'm Pastor Williams of Bible Fellowship Church, 2502 North Liberty Street.
Thank you.
And it's good to see all of you, but I'm here to stand on behalf of the neighborhood. I've been a pastor there now 18 years, and I've always worried about the children on that corner down there all the time. They always stumble at the corner, and the lady would always walk them across and stuff. We have church Wednesday nights also, and a lot of times I go to church and work, and I see kids out there playing and everything. But I want to say something, you know, my dad and I raised big gardens. My mom and dad had 15 kids, we had a large family. But our chemicals were put in a place, and sometimes you could get leakage from them, and you could smell the chemical from it, and we had to take care of the problem, situation. And that's what I don't want to see happen in our neighborhood there at the church. You know, we're here to protect our children as well. And I like what the lady said, stuff runs into creeks and everything else. And on asphalt, it runs out there where the kids play all the time, and it becomes a very hazard. I don't know what they're going to put in this shed or anything, but I do know if I can't eat it or drink it, I don't want it around me. You know what I'm saying? So I think we've got to be very careful what we allow into the neighborhood. And it is, it is very dangerous to have chemicals in a neighborhood, but this neighborhood is a family neighborhood, a very good neighborhood, and we need to take care of our neighborhood. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak against this case?
I want to, like, second the things people said, but I don't really have anything extra to say. Do I have to go up?
You do have to come up here. You want to go on record?
I'm just, um...
I just, oh, Mary Jamison, 301 West Colonel Drive. So my husband already spoke, so I feel like he kind of said a lot of the stuff in the HOA, and then I missed your name, but like, what everybody said. We bought, this is our first house, and we specifically picked this neighborhood. We looked at a lot of houses, and we picked this neighborhood mainly because it is a residential, like, safe, like, family-friendly, like, we liked that. When we visited, there were kids running all over, going to school, playing, like, I feel so much anxiety about the thought of having this rezoned to C2, or, yeah, C2, is that what it is? And about there being, yeah, the chemical runoff is like the big one for me. I, we don't even use pesticides in our yard. I don't want those around. And truly, also, I try to drive that way to go to work all the time. It is a mess with the traffic. I just wanted to, with everybody else saying that, like, the kid, I feel like I'm going to hit a kid like every five seconds. They're everywhere, and it is really hard to get in and out. And then lastly, I just, again, what everyone said, I don't see how this is helpful for our neighborhood. I don't see how, like, this gives anything to our neighborhood. It's not like a little local business, it's not something that gives back to the community in any way. So I just don't see how it is in any way beneficial. And if we're trying to get to a residential in the whole area, why are we moving the opposite direction? That just seems not helpful either. So that's really all I have to say.
Perfect, thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak against this case? Okay, hearing none. Commissioners, do you want the applicant or the Realtor? Which one? The Realtor, the owner?
I want to see if any of them want to say any rebuttal.
Would any of you like to come up and rebut?
Tim Bosler with Hakes Real Estate again. Just to reiterate that, well, and I'll let Jason talk about this. Actually, Jason, why don't you talk about the EPA and what will actually be happening there, including traffic?
So, how do I say this? I get inspected quite often by the Department of Agriculture. I'm in direct contact with Diane, who is the president of the director, or the Department of Agriculture out of Jefferson City. When it comes to any pesticide spills, I can't say it never happens because it does. There's measurements that you have to take per EPA to stop runoff. Products that we store and carry are general-use pesticides, you can go on Amazon and get the same stuff that I use. I don't have any restricted material that I store or use due to the laws have really changed. I've been doing pest control 18 years. Products that I started out with, you can't get anymore, the EPA's pulled them. As far as traffic goes, I mean, we're looking, we're talking three trucks in and out, and as far as using the crosswalk, I'm not here to move a crosswalk or anything. I'm here to use the building to store some products, mainly trucks, put them in those garage bays, use it as a place for interviews. I don't even have meetings there, I take my guys out to lunch. As far as, I mean, going back to the pesticides, toothpaste is more toxic than the products that I use. So a lot of stuff that I use is based off of chrysanthemums, which is a flower, or boric acids, which is in our laundry detergent. Any questions?
No. All right, thank you.
Just want to follow up, and I know there's a lot of comments about, about traffic. Well, the traffic is there. We're not causing the traffic. We're not adding anything to the traffic. Three vehicles, once or twice a week, is what they've been telling us. So we can't really take the blame for having a school there and having a residential area next door. We're just wanting to buy a property, these guys want to buy a property, improve it, and improve the neighborhood when they do it. And it's going to be an improvement from what it is right now. And I represent the owner, so, anyway, I guess that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
I would just like to point out, in regards to the traffic generation, that a lot of the other uses that are permitted under C1 would generate a lot more traffic and would cause a lot more problems for the schoolchildren. So that would be something to consider if that's their main concern, that this would be generating a lot less traffic than some of the other permitted uses.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioners, are we ready to close?
Is it possible for me to just ask you a little thing?
Sure, come on up. Well, you have to come up here, and you have to, and then they'll have to answer on the microphone.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
So, I understand the nature of their business, and I understand why the zoning would have to be changed for that particular business. We don't want that zoning changed, and the reason for that is it opens us up to a future that is gravely unknown. And if, you know, if they were coming in there and, you know, having girls sit at the office or what have you, and that was copacetic with the city, that's one thing. But the problem is, is that we feel we're kind of, this is a familiar feeling from the last time that we had an issue and we're here, and I kind of feel like there's a little bit of smoke being blown, and I know what that feels like. So that being said, that is our gravest concern. When this was platted in 1957, this particular lot, it was a gas station, and I understand that it could not be a gas station today because of the changes that have been made. And there's reason for those changes. So again, this is not appropriate. The other property that somehow, the unicorn, that got made magically into C2, matter of fact, I talked to John Perkins today, he could not remember when nor how that occurred. But he's, you know, everybody is of the same mind that that, that's, it was C1, it was intended to be C1, it was written into the covenants and everything. See, you know, that it, well, they didn't have that zoning, excuse me, that it was to be commercial lots. But it was a grocery store and laundromat, and then it was a grocery store, remained a grocery store, and one end was a beauty salon. And this is a neighborhood, and this is our entrance into our neighborhood, and it's sad enough that we have the fenced area that the city has to put, you know, the infrastructure in. We get that, we deal with that. But we don't want a business right there by our neighborhood sign that we had to fight tooth and nail to get replaced after the city infrastructure changes caused our initial neighborhood sign to come down, and it remained missing for 30 years. We just, we just want a break. It's like we just want to have our little family neighborhood and not have anything intrusive. And, you know, we're not against business, we love business, but something that would be appropriate and to the nature of the existing neighborhood. And those houses, the pictures, it's hard to tell, but literally, these people's backyards butt up to a fence, and then there's, I don't know what the footage is there, but it's just, they're right there on that property. So it's just not in the spirit of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you repeat your first name again?
I'm sorry, Jana Evans.
That's, no, that's fine. I just want to make sure I wrote down the right thing.
And I did want to reiterate, too, that the gentleman, he lives up on Union, that's in Sugar Creek, and the address he gave was Sugar Creek. He is not part of the platte of Kentucky Hills.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We are ready to close the public hearing portion of this. Commissioners, any discussion with each other? Questions of the staff or I'd entertain a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I know lots of people grew up in Kentucky Hills, and it is a nice neighborhood, so I do see a problem with it, C2. I don't like to see it go C2 because it opens up like a lot of stuff. The guy's business, I do agree, should be probably down in the C1, but that's, according to staff, that's not liable in the C1 zoning. So I'm just going to go by staff recommendation, so I'm going to vote against it.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I don't understand why Commissioner Nesbit is addressing what should be C1 or what should be C2. The ordinance is very clear about what is 1 and what is 2. Ms. Evans made a comment about the quiet enjoyment of their home. It is sacred. People have a right to live in their homes without fear or remorse. Ms. Jamison made the statement about anxiety, and she has every right to have tremendous anxiety. I wish nothing but the best for our new friend from Iowa. In fact, I actually married a girl from Iowa. Good people. But these people have a right to their home. But these people have a right to their home and the quiet enjoyment of their home. And everything this commission should be directed toward ensuring that and preserving that, which as Mr. Jamison said, it has worked for fifty-eight years. It should work for another fifty-eight years. I don't see how it is possible for any member of this commission to say that would be acceptable to put up, up business of that nature in this neighborhood. I will go to the city council and I will advocate to the last breath in my body that this never happens to this neighborhood. A year back, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So the question, just remind everybody that before us is to rezon this property from C1 to C2. So do I have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve case twenty-three dash one hundred dash twenty-four.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
No.
Commissioner Nesbit?
No.
Commissioner Preston?
No.
Commissioner H Wiley?
No.
Commissioner L Wiley?
No.
Chairman McClain?
No. Case number twenty-three dash one hundred dash twenty-four, the rezoning of twenty-five hundred North Liberty Street, has been denied. Okay, thank you. Okay, next case is case twenty-three dash four hundred dash thirteen, short-term rental at eighteen two-two-nine East Twelfth Street Terrace, Twelfth Terrace North. Hey, excuse me, but if you could, folks, if you all could discuss outside, that'd be really great. Thank you. That's right. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Um, for this case on uh, eighteen two twenty-nine East Twelfth Terrace North, um, this uh, short-term rental, the applicant is Christopher Kelly. Um, the vicinity map is up on the screen. Um, basically, we're talking about um, the area about block just right off um, twenty-four highway where there's a, uh, the road turns back on itself there, a little isolated um, multi-family unit subdivision there, uh, just south of Kentucky and north of twenty-four highway. So um, here we have the buffer area for the uh, or not, the, the notification area, uh, for within um, a hundred and eighty-five feet of the property. Um, the unit that would be subject to being an STR would be the one that's on the, the west side of that um, duplex, um, the right side being a long-term rental and would continue to be such. So here's an aerial photograph showing that duplex, uh, the dot being on the um, uh, unit side where that use is or would be. And this shows the nearest uh, other STRs within um, the, the range of this one. And as you can see, there's none to be seen for blocks, so. We have the uh, floor and evacuation plan. Um, so it's a floor plan for both the first floor and the second floor of this unit, as well as um, fire evacuation uh, procedures uh, for getting out of that um, particular unit. And then the parking plan, basically the same floor plan, emphasizing the one-car garage. Um, paved driveway says two vehicles. I would say one vehicle because um, two would block the sidewalk. And then there's a possi, then there's um, a place to park one vehicle along the um, the street. Uh, background, uh, property history, uh, the two-family residence located at eighteen two-two-nine and eighteen uh, two-three-one East uh, Twelfth Terrace North was built in the early two thousands. It was built as a duplex and continues to be a two-family residence in use and design. Physical characteristics of the proposal, uh, the two thousand um, three hundred forty-eight square foot beige, uh, two-family residence lies on the nine thousand three hundred eight square foot lot. Of course, the particular unit is one thousand one hundred seventy-two square feet, and that's the west side, which is eighteen uh, two-two-nine. It has a master bedroom, uh, laundry room, and a half-bath and garage and patio on the first floor, as we saw earlier. And on the second floor, the unit has two additional bedrooms, a living room, a kitchen, bathroom, and a balcony. Um, there's a single-car garage, um, and uh, single-car driveway to access that. Um, characteristics of the area, the surrounding, mostly two-family neighborhood, features duplexes of similar design and size, and there are sidewalks on both sides of uh, Twelfth Terrace North. Uh, parking, in addition to the single-family garage, the use has a single-car driveway with room for one car and a third could park in the street. Uh, unruly guests and security. Uh, first, uh, no tolerance notifications uh, would be sent out before booking. Uh, second, uh, no under quote, four-star review guests would be accepted. And third, um, stays would be a minimum of three nights, uh, to avoid potential parties. Uh, the owner lives in the area and will be available to address any issues. Um, his, the applicant address says eighty-nine twenty-nine North Kentucky Court in KCMO, which sounds like the north of the river. Um, short-term rental requirements, the applicant must address the following topics. Uh, noise monitoring, uh, the applicant will be using a noise monitoring system called Minute. Uh, trash removal, the trash pickup is scheduled with uh, AAA for a weekly pickup on Thursdays. Uh, property listing, the property would only be listed on Airbnb, the only platform. Uh, business operations and security, no tolerance notifications would be sent out before booking, like we said uh, earlier. No uh, quote, under uh, four-star review guests would be accepted, and stays would be a minimum of three nights to avoid those potential parties. Um, and um, city's short-term rental checklist, uh, the form was completed by the applicant, uh, covering uh, license, future inspections, insurance, and onsite uh, posting and so forth. Um, fire safety, as we have seen, the evacuation plan has been submitted along with floor plans for the house. And the fire escape plan, that this would have to be posted as uh, code requires. Um, city inspection, the property has been inspected by the city fire inspector and passed the initial short-term fire, life, and safety inspection. And that was that sheet that I gave you, and he did that inspection last week. So facing southeast, um, looking directly at the property, so the, there, on the right-hand side, in front of the, uh, the, behind the tra, the red trash can, that's uh, is the unit in question. And then this is looking to the west, southwest down the street. And then looking northeast up the street. That's directly across the street and um, there at that island also across the street. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of this short-term rental with the following conditions. Uh, the short-term rental shall be allowed um, in, at, only be allowed in, in the one unit, eighteen uh, two-two-nine East Twelfth Terrace North. Uh, the short-term rental shall obtain a business license in accordance with the city code and comply with Article Two, Chapter Five of the city code. The occupation license number shall be listed on all advertisements and online platforms. Uh, number three, the business must comply with all safety and other standards established by Section fourteen, four-twenty of the business code. Uh, number four, uh, the business, the business, the maximum occupancy of the premises shall be limited to six adults and ten persons. Uh, the noise monitoring system shall be installed and activated. The good neighbor guidelines, evacuation plan, and other notices uh, must be properly posted um, prior to the approval of the business And that concludes my presentation, and I'm ready to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Madam Chair? Go ahead. Brian, on um, the rules, we know the rule is usually ten people, and that's six adults and four children. In the letter, it says six total people.
Okay.
On the letter to the occupants. So in this particular place, is it a total of ten, or is it six adults, four children?
They're, they're, they're saying six people.
Six total.
I'm just saying, we, we just, this is just reflecting what the code is.
Okay.
Which is, you can have up to ten persons, so.
They could have up to ten.
Right. But they can only have six adults, obviously, in the three bedrooms.
Okay, it says six people, so it doesn't say six adults. It's, it's contradicting. So I just want to clarify.
My report, or?
The report says six adults, four, up to ten people total.
Yes.
The property owner notification letter says six total people. So I just want to know what we're approving, what we're recommending. Is it that they could have ten, or that they could have six?
Their intention is to have six.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Brian, real quick, it, all the way around this, is it duplexes all the way around both sides of the street?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, that whole little.
You can see that's the other side of the street there, so.
I can't, the trees, I mean, I thought this was a single place when I saw all your pictures here. I thought it was single until you started saying duplexes. I thought it was, because of the pictures that we had, so that's why I wanted to make sure.
This is across the street, and of course, behind them is the right-of-way of twenty-four highway.
Right, twenty-four highway. So basically, it's all duplexes in there right now. Okay, thank you.
Alright, um, is the applicant here? And would you like to come on for, come on forward? And state your name and your address, please.
Hi, Christopher Kelly, eighty-nine twenty-nine North Kentucky Court, Kansas City, Missouri. And I'm just here for any, oh, Christopher Kelly, yeah, any, any questions you all have? And I, I do want to confirm that six is what we have listed on Airbnb as far as who, who's been there and can stay there, so.
Okay. And you, so you have a full-time renter on one side, correct?
Yes.
And so you're only doing one side?
Correct.
As the Airbnb, okay.
Correct.
Have you talked to that full-time renter about having short-term rentals?
Yes, I've, I've spoke to him myself, and we have a property manager that's notified them, and they seem to have no issue. Um, they're, they've been happy so far, and we've addressed any maintenance issues they've had.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
So who's the first call on this? You or property management when there's problems?
It's, it's, it's me. We're, we're, we have a property manager for our long-term rentals, but we manage uh, ourselves the short-term, any short-term rentals we have. And this is the only one we have in Independence.
Okay, so, and that, how long has it, it hasn't been operating as a short-term yet? This the first time?
Um, it has still, it has already been operated, and, I mean, we just wanted to do the right thing by getting it licensed, as we were told, um.
So, so otherwise, you were caught doing short-term rentals, or did you?
No, no, I, I came in because we saw the news lately, I mean, in, in other cities, and, you know, we wanted to be doing the right thing.
Okay, appreciate that, then. Thank you.
Yeah, I talked to Mr. Garrett, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. You can sit, you can take a seat. Is there anyone here to speak for this case? Is there anybody here to speak against this case? Hearing none. Commissioners, any other questions before I close the public hearing? Public hearing is closed. I would entertain a motion or unless you have more discussion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve case twenty-three dash four hundred dash thirteen.
I'll second. Thank you. And we're ready for the vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley?
Yes.
And Chairman McClain?
Yes. Case number twenty-three dash four hundred dash thirteen, short-term rental at eighteen two-two-nine East Twelfth Terrace North has been approved. Thank you and good Next case, number twenty-three dash four hundred dash fourteen, short-term rental at four-four-zero-nine South Osage Street. Before I have you give the report, um, can I go ahead and swear in the, one of the women who would like to speak tonight?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and stand up. And if you'll raise your right hand, do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth before this commission? If so, say I do. Thank you. Okay. Staff report, please.
Alright, this is case twenty-three four hundred fourteen, short-term rental at forty-four oh nine South Osage Street. The applicant is Sean Foster, and the action is for a short-term rental. You can see on the vicinity map, this is uh, near Forty-Fourth Street and Osage, north of Forty Highway. So first, I just want to say that we did have a legal protest submitted. Um, all of you, except for Commissioner H Wiley, sorry, got one of these. Um, this shows a map with the hundred and eighty-five foot area surrounding the property. And the, the properties highlighted in blue were the ones that signed the petition and were verified. I also included a list of the petition itself, or a copy of the petition itself, and a table showing the property owners and which ones were verified. So that means that instead of approving this short-term rental, you will now be making a recommendation to the city council, and they will have the final say. Also, um, just to note quickly, Commissioner Nesbit, when this, this map that shows the hundred and eighty-five feet, that's how we determine the, the area for the notification letters. Any property, even if it's just an inch, inside that circle gets a letter. So here's an aerial photograph of the property. You can see that the east end is up against some train tracks. And it's kind of right there at the corner of Forty-Fourth and Osage. This is the nearest short-term rental map. The nearest short-term rental, I believe, was well over a thousand feet away. So it is allowed per the density requirements of the code. This is the floor plan submitted by the applicant. You can see that there are three bedrooms and two bathrooms upstairs, as well as a living room and a kitchen, or a living room, kitchen, and dining area. There's also a basement, and the garage to the property is part of the, the basement. They've also submitted the evacuation. They've also submitted the evacuation plan. So the exits are on the front and back doors on the first floor, and then through up the stairs, and then out the garage on the basement floor. The applicant has also provided the parking plan, so there are room for two cars in the garage, as well as two additional vehicles in the driveway. So the property history. So the house located at forty-four oh-nine South Osage Street was built in nineteen sixty-five, and it was built as a single-family home, and continues to be single-family and residence in use and design. The physical characteristic of the property and the proposal. The eleven-hundred-and-four-square-foot brick house lies on a forty-thousand-and-sixty-three-square-foot lot. It is a multi-story home with an attached two-car garage. The house is three bedrooms, a living room, a kitchen, a dining room, and two bathrooms on the primary floor. And the home also has a basement that connects to the attached two-car garage. The applicant would like to use this property as a short-term rental to be listed on Airbnb. Characteristics of the area. The surrounding mostly single-family neighborhood features homes of similar design and size. Train tracks for the Missouri Pacific Railroad lie behind the house to the east. Parking. The property has a two-car-wide driveway that leads to an attached garage that can accommodate two vehicles. Four cars could be parked on-site, including two in the garage. Given the large amount of paved driveway surface, this should not be an issue. Unruly guests and security. The short-term rental will be equipped with the Minute brand SDR Norries monitoring system in the home, and the applicant lives roughly five minutes away by car. Thus, he'll be nearby to address any issues should they arise. The short-term rental requirements. Noise monitoring. The applicant will install a minute noise monitoring system, which will notify the applicant if the decibel level is above eighty-five for more than five continuous minutes. Trash removal. Trash pickup is scheduled for a weekly pickup with Ted's Trash. The applicant or another agent will ensure that trash is taken care of each week. The property listing. The property will only be listed on Airbnb. Business operations and security. The applicant, the applicant will oversee the site's security and general business operations, including screening customers and coordinating bookings. The city's short-term rental checklist. The form was completed by the applicant, covering licensing, future inspections, insurance, and onsite information posting and so forth. Fire safety. A fire evacuation plan has been submitted with the floor plans of the house. The firescape plan must be posted per code requirement. And the city inspection. The property shall pass the the initial short-term rental fire and life safety inspections. And as Brian provided, at the time that I created this, it had not yet passed the inspection, but it has since passed the inspection. And there are no other short-term rentals in this area, therefore, the application follows the density limitations of the city code. Now, for the the pictures, this is looking directly at the property facing east. This is facing north, looking sort of up Osage Street. This is hundred-and-eighty degrees, looking south, facing down Osage Street. This is facing westward, looking down Forty-Fourth Street. That's kind of that intersection that was nearby. And this is if you're directly in front of the house, facing west. This is the adjacent property to the north, and this is the adjacent property to the south. The staff recommends approval of this short-term rental with the following conditions. One, the short-term rental shall obtain a business license in accordance with the city code and comply with Article Three, Chapter Five of the city code. The occupation license number shall be listed on all advertisements and online platforms. Two, the business must comply with all safety and other standards established by Section fourteen four-twenty of city code. Three, the maximum occupancy on the premises shall be limited to six adults and ten total persons. Four, while the code allows up to four bedrooms in a short-term rental, the maximum number of bedrooms for this application shall be three. Five, the noise monitoring system shall be installed and activated in the common areas accessible to all tenants. The Good Neighbor Guidelines, evacuation plan, and other notices must be properly posted prior to approval of the business license. And that completes my presentation.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Will you come on up and state your name and your address, please? And give us any information you would like for us to know.
Sean Foster, thirty-nine oh-nine South Phelps Road in Independence. I just wanted to add that we screen our guests well. I've had an, I've had one run in here in Independence for the last two years, and actually sold it, and I moved all the furniture to this one. I had zero problems with that one. As far as I know, zero complaints from the neighbors. I never had any issues that I even had to go to the house to deal with. So I like, I'm just saying, I have a good track record already, right here in Independence. And we screen, we don't allow auto bookings. We screen everybody that tries to book. Yeah, that's all, answer any questions anybody has, but I'd like to hope that the track record kind of speaks for itself a little bit.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case?
Against.
Okay, is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? And if you'll state your name and your address, please.
Christine Heil, I live at thirteen four-oh-one East Forty-Fourth Street. That's our property you see right directly to the west of the house in question. There are several of the property owners that are here this evening, but I'm just going to keep this brief. I'm just going to summarize our concerns, so I'm the only one that's going to speak.
Okay.
This neighborhood is zoned for single-family dwellings, not for business or hotels. This is a quiet neighborhood. We are not in favor of the noise and traffic that comes with short-term rentals. Most of us have been here for years, decades. We like for our neighbors to have some investment, both social and financial, in the neighborhood. We understand that the owner's ambition is to realize a profit on his investment, but a short-term rental, we do not feel is appropriate in our neighborhood. That's it.
Commissioners, any questions? Have you been sworn in?
No, I didn't, no.
Okay, I need to square.
We originally were told we weren't, we weren't to speak here.
Oh, so if you'll stand up, raise your right hand. Do you promise to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, say I do.
I do, thank you.
Thank you. Now you can come up and state your name and your address, please. I'm assuming you're speaking against.
Yes, ma'am. My name's Mark Rockley. I'm at one-three-three oh-six East Forty-Fourth Terrace. I'm just around the corner, just to the south side of the house. The letter that we got to begin with, it kind of confused us. They are single-family dwellings. As I told Mr. Preston earlier, we usually don't argue about anything in that neighborhood, but we've had overabundance of people that are living in that neighborhood that are bringing their trucks home, their utility trucks. And we're starting to have a problem with this. They're parking them outside and along our streets. In front of this house is a, on Osage, is one of the main areas to pick up the kids for school. Since they can't be picked up in front of their house, they have a little spot that they have to go to that the school district tells them to. This, this is one where not only the high school kids, but the junior high and the elementary get picked up on Osage. It is a, a major snow route, so you can't really have any cars parked on that street during the wintertime for plows. What concerns a couple of us in the neighborhood is the letter that we received from the community development. It says total maximum occupancy is ten. In parentheses, it says six adults allowed per bedroom, plus children. Number of bedrooms used is three. The way I look at it, I'm doing the math, that's eighteen, plus kids. I don't know, I mean, I'm reading the letter at that, and that, I'm not the only one that can come up with that figure there, but.
We do have an ordinance that there is a minimum.
I understand.
They cannot have more.
But we are in an neighborhood that it's a side argument that we're having with Independence, that we don't get looked at, but we're quiet, everybody walks their dogs, everybody plays in the street, we have no park, so the kids are running around. Everybody watches for everybody, the neighbors. We've been there for eons, for a long time. But to bring a, a business and a short-term rental, the noise, three days, I mean, most Airbnbs that I know of, people only rent for one day, and all of a sudden, they have a party there. All of a sudden, there's parks parked up and down the neighborhood. They're scattered throughout the neighborhood. We've had that problem with just partygoers. We want to be left alone. We want our houses to be respectable, and to keep our value, since our county turned around and hit us with taxes, let's, you know, keep our neighborhood clean enough to where we don't, we have enough businesses on Forty Highway. Can't something that change to have other investments go along and leave our neighborhoods and our kids alone to no businesses? We have plenty of construction guys that bring in their trucks, their backhoes and trailers into our neighborhoods, damaging our streets. And I'm sure calls have been made, but we haven't had any replies to them. Leave us alone. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak against this case? Were you sworn in?
No, I wasn't, I wasn't aware of your job, so, sorry about that.
No, 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 it's fine. If you will raise your right hand, do you promise to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, say I do.
I do.
Thank you. If you'll state your name and your address, please.
I am Magdalene Santalan, and I live at forty-four oh-five South Osage. I am the direct neighbor.
Thank you.
To the north of this property.
You said Magdalene.
Magdalene.
Magdalene, okay.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I did, I reached out to Sean via email, and I don't recall response, but I had some concerns and some questions because I wasn't sure what a short-term rental meant. I've, I've seen it as far as Airbnb or extended stays before. I have children, and so I've lived next to this property for sixteen years now, and I have seen many people, like, it's been rental. I know the, you know, who used to live there originally when I moved in, and when he left, we had, as a rental property. And the people that have come in and out of their, that property, I have, I have applied to the city many times for the upkeep, for security issues, for them just disappearing in the middle of the night. And none of us are ever aware of that. I have teenagers and young children. There are young children on the other side of the house. There's young children across the street. And yes, like Mark had stated, my, my property is the bus stop. Luckily, I work from home, so I get to monitor everybody's kids with my cameras to make sure they're getting picked up and dropped off. That's just something that we do. That's what our families do. I do have concerns about the screening process. I've done an Airbnb. I've never been screened. I've never been looked at. The most I've said is they've asked me, when am I coming? And here are the keys. So I do have concerns because I've seen the renters come through, and I'm, I'm like, how are they even concerned if they're leaving in the middle of the night? Two houses up from us, another rental property for the longest, they set their basement on fire to get out of it. So seeing an Airbnb, short-term rental, to now, you know, other rental properties, these people have come in, destroyed the properties, and left. It, it's scary. I'm concerned, especially with my children and everybody else's children. They're, they, they range, I see them running up the street, coming down the street to their homes, and all of us are out there watching to make sure they get there safely. It's, it is, it's a young neighborhood. It's growing. I mean, my mom has been there for forty, gosh, how old am I, forty-six years now, and I've been a part of that my entire life. That's where I grew up. It was scary to see rentals, and now, yes, a short-term, I'm concerned. I'm concerned about really what's going to happen with security, what's going to happen with the response time, and how is that going to apply? And again, screening. I, I don't know how many people have done Airbnbs. I mean, I know personally, again, I've never been screened. I at least, I know I'm a respectable person, I take care of the property like it's my own, but I know that doesn't always happen. So, just my two cents, so I hope it's considered somehow.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak against this case? All right, hearing none, commissioners, do you have any questions? Would you like the applicant to come back up? Okay, would you like to come back up and speak to the issues?
Not even to say my name and everything. Okay, so I, I just wanted to say, for, for Maggie, I did, I'm looking now, I did reply the next day. I was hoping to talk with you. But as far as the screening, I mean, so, like I said, there's not auto bu, I don't have auto, I don't allow them to auto book, which means they just click book and they're in. They have to, they have to message us, they have to explain why they're coming, who they're coming with. We very, very rarely will let anybody local. If they're from any city or town, from anywhere close to this, the KC Metro, it's almost always no, no matter what. Even, you know, we get the stories about, oh, our house is getting renovated, you know, we just, we, we, we've had those issues in the past with other short-term rentals, and we don't allow those. We make sure they're actually coming with a legit reason. We've, we've been, we're so used to asking these questions that we're doing pretty good. I would also say several of the concerns that they have, like with the kids and the traffic and the neighbors, it's not going to be any different than a, a mid or a long-term rental, in my opinion. It actually leased more, more or less so because on the short-term rentals, it's mostly weekends that are booked. So like, out of the month, you know, it's only booked fifteen to twenty days. So it's even less wear and tear on the neighborhood, on the traffic, on all that. So that's all I want to say.
Oops, thank you. Okay, commissioners, do we want to close the public hearing? Are you ready to discuss?
I have one question for the staff.
Can you just remind me again of the number, do we have a requirement for the number of stay nights in our new code?
We do.
We have, we have a maximum, thirty days, but we don't have a minimum.
But we don't have a minimum, okay.
Well, they have to stay more than two nights, right?
Okay, yeah, yes. So we do actually have a minimum.
Yeah, okay.
In that sense, yes.
I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have been a tremendous proponent of short-term rentals. I have advocated for short-term rentals. There are times when short-term rentals afford the property owner, especially when it's a owner-occupied situation, the additional money is to make property improvements. But I have been absolutely consistent about the neighbors owning their neighborhood. I would always advise anybody planning to do short-term rentals, talk to the neighbors before you buy the property with the intent to do short-term rentals. Ms. Magdalene made a comment that she is scared and concerned, and concerned about the security of her neighborhood. Residents, I've said this before, have a right to the quiet enjoyment of their home without fear, encroachment, or anything else that may bring discomfort. without fear, encroachment, or anything else that may bring discomfort. I like the concept of short-term rentals. The applicant is correct about being able to screen. In this case, however, it doesn't matter if they screen. The people own their neighborhood. They have a right to protect it and not permit businesses into their neighborhood if they don't want it. There's no way I'm going to possibly vote for this applicant. I think he'll do a brilliant job in some other neighborhood that is welcoming, but this neighborhood said no. And for any commissioner to say otherwise is abdicating their responsibilities to the people in the neighborhood. I yield back, Madam Chair. I will not vote for this. It would be a no vote for me.
Thank you. I do just want to speak to the fears of short-term rentals. I think there's five in my neighborhood, maybe? I know there's at least three. And I will tell you, I never hear anything from them. I think to some degree, short-term rental has helped long-term rental issues because I also, we also have a home in our neighborhood that is a rental, and it is a nightmare all the time. And short-term rentals have solved that issue in our neighborhood. Because the people who do short-term rentals, specifically if you're on Airbnb, they are judged, they are screened, and they're only there for short-term. And they do tend to be people that respect property. They treat it more like a hotel than a home, home, that they can just tear up because for Airbnb specifically short-terms, if you are that person who destroys the property, you're never going to get to do one again, ever. If you are a short-term rental person or owner who does the short-term and you get a bad score, Airbnb will drop you like a hot potato. So there is things in place for short-term rentals that has increased as it's become more popular, and so there is an intrinsic value in that for neighborhoods, that specifically are neighborhoods that tend to get a lot of rental properties in them. This does tend to help. And I'm not saying one way or the other. I understand why you don't want it, but I also just want to help educate that it is not as scary as you think it is. He's right. You have a right to your neighborhood, and if that's the way you all feel, fair enough. That is a fair observation. But in general, these short-term rentals, I think we have seen have done really helpful things for neighborhoods. It has cleaned up houses that wouldn't have gotten cleaned up had some person in Texas bought it and not really cared how it looked or who was living in it. Short-term rentals require that you're here, at least we do, and so there has been value in that, and it has helped increase neighborhood security, who's coming in and out. I understand that is still a scary thing, who's coming in and out, but...
Madam Chair.
It has helped. Go ahead.
Why Texas?
I don't know. I just was pulling a state, it's the only state I can remember. It's a big one. I could have said California, but I don't know.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. So I'm off my soapbox. Anything else? Or I'd entertain a motion.
I'd just like to clarify real quick. Legal protest means what, again?
So it means that they, well, part of the legal protest is that they have to get it done, I believe, twenty-four hours before the commission, planning commission meet, which they did, and also provide their name and address, the date that they signed, and as well get the entire petition notarized. And so they, they did do that. There was a legal protest. The signatures were verified, and so now what that means is that the city council makes the final determination, and your vote is a recommendation to the city council.
And how many people were verified to have signed that protest?
So ten people signed the protest, but some of them were married, so it was eight properties.
Eight properties.
By the way, I guess to also clarify, the legal protest area goes off the land area, not the, so in the table I provided, I showed the percent of the area. So it's twenty-five percent of the land area needs to sign the petition to be considered a legal protest, and they receive forty-eight percent of the land area.
So what we decide tonight, it still goes to council?
Correct.
Because of the legal protest? Okay. All right.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
In the matter of case two-three...
I need to close the public. Not yet, almost. I am closing...
I withdraw my previous remarks, Madam Chair.
I'm, I was just waiting. I'm closing the public hearing now, if you would like to discuss...
Madam Chair. Commissioner Nesbit will permit me the opportunity to make a recommendation, a motion. In the matter of case number two-three dash four-zero-zero dash one-four, short-term rentals at four-four-zero-nine South Osage Street, in the request by Mr. Sean Foster for short-term rental, I move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. And we're ready for the vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
No.
Commissioner Nesbit.
No.
Commissioner Preston.
No.
Commissioner H. Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L. Wiley.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
What's the tally on that? Is it three-three?
Three and three.
Okay. So...
We go without a recommendation?
No recommendation.
Okay, so there's no recommendation, and it will go to city council. What's the next one? Do we have a date? It's October something, or maybe September.
No, it'd be the November.
I mean, November.
November sixth is the...
First reading.
Would be the first meeting in November. Is that correct?
Correct, and the second reading on the November twentieth.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to take this opportunity to applaud the city planning commission staff for an absolutely splendid job on presentations, facts, because I know it can be a pain, but I just want to take this opportunity to absolutely applaud even, even the legal council. Thank you all very much. I yield back, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like if staff could give us something like this in the future for when we have a one-hundred-and-eighty-five-degree around business property. It looks nice. It'd help with our addresses. I don't know if that's something we can get happening.
Yes, that is something I can do. I have a GIS background. I love making maps, so I'd be more than happy to do that for you guys.
Yeah, we really like that.
I like that.
Mr. Garrett never confesses GIS experience previously. We may now think more highly of you.
Oh, that's great. Normally, planners aren't very fond of GIS, but, you know.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Something else here that got brought to our attention, the six adults allowed per bedroom. We going to get that addressed, guys, or?
Yes, that was entirely my mistake, a quick typo that I should have double-checked for all, it was brought to my attention for all previous short-term rentals. I have been double and triple checking that.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Yeah, I thought we had rules against that. Anything for the roundtable?
Madam Chair.
Sir.
It's eight-forty-one. Only thing I want to make around is that corner.
Thank you.
The city council meeting to be November sixth for a first reading and November twentieth for a second reading. You can come to those, that's up to you. Well, I'll defer to planning commission...
Yes, I can say probably.
Staff on exactly what his ability is at those meetings.
So you wouldn't be allowed to speak unless there were new information brought forward? So you certainly could come and watch and see what they say, but you wouldn't be required to be there?
So, oh, wait, oh, yeah, you going to tell him?
Yeah, so there's, there's a public comment portion of the meeting where anyone can talk, okay? You would be allowed to talk, to talk during that time if you want, but there is not going to be, unless new information is submitted, which is a, there's a special process for that in the code, and that goes through the planning department. Unless that happens, there's not going to be any, a public hearing like there was tonight. Okay? So anyone can show up to speak about anything at a council meeting, so you can still come and talk about something if you want, but there will not be a designated time to talk about this issue like there was tonight. They will not make, they won't, it has two readings. It will, it'll have a first reading on the sixth. They will not vote on it on the sixth. They won't vote on it until the twentieth.
Thank you.
There's no further notification from here. So once it goes to the council, so we're telling you it'll be November sixth and November twentieth.
And all of that is public.
Six P.M. It'll be on the city council meeting agenda right here.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned at eight-forty-three.